Good evening. I'll call to order the Arvada City Council meeting for January 27th, 2020. Call upon Councilmember Bob Pfeifer.
Thank you. Would everyone join me in a moment of reflection? And now for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Kristin Rush, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Williams?
Here.
Mayor Protem Miller?
Here.
Councilmember Pfeifer?
Here.
Councilmember Ford?
Here.
Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Councilmember Marriott?
Here.
Councilmember Simpson?
Here.
You all have had and received and reviewed the minutes of the January 6th meeting. Are there any changes or corrections? Seeing none, we will enter them as approved. Next, we have, we have no recognitions or communications tonight. Is that correct, Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Then next, we have a presentation on the Foothills Animal Shelter.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We'll have Deputy C. Manager Lori Gillis begin this presentation and introduce it. And as you may know, Lori is the president of the Board of Directors for the Foothills Animal Shelter.
Mr. Mayor of the council, and I have the executive director of Foothills Animal Shelter, Connie Howard, here to provide a presentation regarding the work and the impacts on the city of Arvada. I've also asked members of the city Arvada team who collaborate with the Foothills Animal Shelter to be present in case there are any questions, but I'd also ask that they introduce themselves. And we'll walk through the presentation and get to questions at the end. As you know, we work with Foothills Animal Shelter through an intergovernmental agreement and provide funding. The intergovernmental agreement includes other cities and municipalities and the county in the area utilizing the Foothills Animal Shelter. I hope you find this presentation enjoyable and informative. Ms. Howard.
Thank you very much.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm honored to be here tonight. And in reflection of the time that you all spend, I won't, I will be brief. My presentation tonight is focusing on last year's stats. However, some of it is also 2018 because of our financials have not been audited yet. So I've handed out our 2018 annual report as well as a 2019 fact sheet. And should work, but, okay. I was shown how to do it. In 2019, we provided services to 10,947 animals for, in a variety of ways. One of the premises of how the work we do is that we ensure care for every unwanted homeless animal in Jefferson County. In 2019, 267 animals were relinquished by your citizens. We are also an open admission facility, which means that we don't turn any animals away from Jefferson County. We have night drop cages, which allows folks to come in 24/7 and leave animals. We also are part of the socially conscious sheltering movement. There is a bill being introduced in the Senate that will reflect this this year. And one of those tenants is that we have to have 24/7 access for animals. We've also instituted a program this past year called our Protective Custody Program, which means that families in crisis can have animals transported by animal control to our facility. And we provide free boarding. And this year, we started halfway through this year, and 24 Arvada families took advantage of this. This is folks in crisis, someone's hospitalized, a death in the family, for instance, anything like that, any kind of crisis, we will provide care for those animals at no charge. We also support the community need. 523 animals were brought, mostly from your animal control facility, for cremation. So this is animals that are found dead on the road. I'm, no other way to say it. We also provide end-of-life services to citizens in Arvada that are very affordable. And 135 families in the city took advantage of those services as well. We assess all the medical and behavioral needs of any animal relinquished to us. We do have a veterinary clinic onsite with veterinarians. And we have behavior staff, too, to address the needs of those animals. We provide affordable spay-neuter surgeries as well as vaccination services to the community. Last year, we provided 2,667 spay-neuter surgeries. We're expanding that program this year with a partnership with an organization called Spay Today. They do high-volume spay-neuter in Lakewood. And unfortunately, they are booking six weeks out. So we're opening our services, our facility to them so that they can use it two days a week. We also vaccinated 2,755 community pets, and that's a reflection of over 5,000 vaccinations for those animals. We also provided 600 microchips to community pets. And that's to reunite pets when they're missing. 309 animals were served by our behavior program. And this is mostly fear-based behaviors, but also just poorly behaved, especially dogs, those dogs that are jumpy and mouthy. We have playgroups for those animals. We do training programs. We provide enrichment as well. Arvada's citizens adopted 403 animals in 2019. And we did a total of 3,795 adoptions. The vast majority of those are to Jefferson County citizens. Americans spend an average of $126 a month on their pets. And if you do the math of the 403 animals that were adopted, that returns about $610,000 to your community in 2019 alone. We also are committed to making sure, once the animal's left, that we just continue to support them. We reunited 1,730 animals with their owners. So these were animals that lost and came in through animal control or through a citizen. And we were able to return those animals to their families. Our licensing program, in 2019, we launched an incentive program where we provided free microchipping for anyone that licensed their pets. I was hoping it would be better received than it was. However, Arvada was the lead in this. Your officers had 46 citizens who redeemed those free coupons. And in last year, our six, over 6,000 citizens licensed their pets from Arvada. In Jefferson County total, we did, we sold 39,657 licenses. This year, we-
Quick question. That is a real quick question. Do you have any idea about what percentage of pets in Jefferson County or Arvada are being licensed?
Well, the target is that 20% of licensed pets would, owners of pets, dogs, would license their pets. In some cases, those municipalities meet the 20%, and others, they don't. We use a variety of different statistics. We use the demographics of ownership, you know, homeownership and citizens in your area. And then we also use some information from the APPMA and others to tell us that there's about 1.9 dogs in homes in Colorado. We are one of the largest dog-owning states in the country. And so that formula is based to, on how we can determine how many animals should be licensed. So we're, we're not at the 20% mark overall in the county. That 39,000 has been dropping. And we're doing a number of different incentives and programs to try to increase that. We've also included and added an additional staff member this year that will focus on this as well. We just sent a mailer out to 24,000 new homeowners in Jefferson County. So it's county-wide, anyone that purchased a home in 2019 that we know had a pet. And that just went out in the mail this week. Yes.
Over the past six months. So working hard at it, working hard with our animal control officers. But it's been an uphill climb. And as Connie stated, we are dropping as well in Arvada.
So this will, what we're doing is, we're again providing an incentive. So this mailer that went out will give them a free, if they get a free, if they buy a license, we're going to give them a free rabies vaccination. They have to come to our facility to get that with our veterinarians. But again, it's a big value-driven. And Jenny and your team here was the most successful of doing the free microchipping, but I was really hoping it would result in thousands, and it has not.
Before you go on, Ms. Miller's got a question.
Thank you. And just for the public, do your dogs have to be licensed one time when you get a dog, or every single year?
Every single year.
Right. So one of the things that we've seen in other cities, so I used to serve on this board, and I knew that this was always something we talked about at every meeting, how can we get more licenses? And one of the things that we've seen in other cities is having the vets do that. And having them check or register as soon as you bring the dogs in, so that if you're not on there, I didn't know that it had to, your dog had to be licensed every single year. So if there's anything we can do to help with that, too, I just thought it was a one-time, check that box, and I'm done. And, you know.
And we do have a large number of veterinarians that are selling licenses for us. It is, some clinics do a better job than others. We're looking at also additionally providing some incentives to the veterinarians to see if that would help. Could we give them a dollar a license? The license fee is $20 a year, and it is every year. Rabies is every three years. In the state of Colorado, the state statute requires that rabies is connected with licensing. If we could decouple that, it would make it much easier to sell licenses. So you can't go to fairs and such and have a booth and sell licenses because they have to show proof of rabies. So that is one of the biggest challenges. Any other questions? We also foster a culture of transparency. We, I'm happy to share our length of stay. Our live release rate is over 90%. It's at 92% for last year, which means that every animal that came in the building alive, 92% of them left alive. That's really excellent. And that's really a reflection of what's happening in Colorado generally. The changing face of animal welfare is that we don't have puppies and kittens anymore. But what we do have is very challenging animals that have been relinquished usually for particular reasons. The puppies and kittens that we generally get are from out of state and transfers. But generally, you're not going to find free puppies in the street anymore. Our volunteers, last year, we had 464 volunteers, which reflects over 17 full-time equivalents. And we have 166 foster families. These financials are from 2018, as I said, because 2019's are not audited yet. These are similar, will be at a $3.7 million budget. But generally, our service fees make up the bulk of our income. One thing that we're very happy with this year is that our Friends of Foothills, which is our nonprofit charitable arm, raised a million dollars. So that's the best ever. And we're, we're continuing to see the growth in that department. And this year, I'm very confident we'll be over a million. Our expenses, healthcare, as you can imagine, is one of our biggest expensive, expenses. Veterinarians are hard to get right now. We're very much competing on the front range for veterinary staff. And with that, the starting salary has really increased. The cost per capita to run the Foothills Animal Shelter per citizen is at $2.37. The national range is between $1, $1.50 and $6.30. So you can see, having all of the municipalities feed into this is a good business model. Your animal control agency brought a total of 824 animals to our facility. And your citizens brought a total of 630 animals in 2019. Any questions?
Any other questions, Ms. Ford?
Connie, I've heard people ask the question, with all the abandoned animals in Colorado, why, why do we bring in animals from other states? Would you explain that?
Sure. Really, there is not the number of animals anymore coming into the state locally. So in 2018, over 40,000 animals were transferred into the state. And that's another big reason that the state has gotten involved in regulating animal shelters and the work we do, which I think is a really good thing. Again, if it weren't for those, those animals coming in, there's a need to adopt animals. And our numbers on transfers have declined. We had a lot of work to do last year to really make sure that we were doing the best job possible and could still meet the needs of transfers. So we dropped our numbers last year. But you could come in, we took in a transfer on Thursday from the ASPC of 30 dogs. They're all adopted. So you'll often walk through our adoption center, and it will be empty. And people will ask, where are the animals? So people want dogs and cats. And if we don't transfer them in, we don't have them. At the same time, we also weigh, is that our responsibility? You know, people want pets, where else are they going to get them? With increased ordinances, the state statutes that are coming through, we're going to see that even become more of an issue because they're looking at regulating pet stores as well as breeders. So breeders will only be allowed to have one to two litters a year. So people want to have dogs and cats in their lives. And how, so what's our responsibility? It's something we weigh ongoing. The dogs we're getting in, and Jenny certainly could talk about the dogs that she picks up, are often more challenging than just a lost pet. Used to be, a lost pet was easy. Well, now, our court holds and our, our court cases are becoming more and more challenging. And the length of time we're holding these dogs, and whether they're even safe adoption candidates, is another question. You know, if a dog's bitten multiple times, can we put it back out in the, in a neighborhood? Probably not. Did that answer it? It's kind of convoluted. And it's a difficult, it's a difficult challenge. But I will tell you, every shelter on the front range is taking in transfers. We also transfer between each other. So ours, our most difficult cases tend to go to Boulder for behavior. Medical cases, Dumb Friends League will support us. We had 15 Parvo puppies recently. And luckily, Dumb Friends League was able to take eight of them because we could never have treated them all. So we have a really good infrastructure that way.
Great. I don't see any other questions. Let's meet the rest of the team that's helping it from the Arvada perspective.
Good evening. I'm Sergeant Evans. I'm the sergeant that is over the Neighborhood Services team. And so that comprises both the code enforcement and the animal management side of the house. And then with me tonight, I've got my boss, Commander Westbrook. And then I've also got one of my senior animal management officers, Jenny Whittle.
Very good. Well, you all do a great job for us. Thank you. The shelter, the fact that we do have a county shelter that works with all the communities certainly is an economy of scale. I don't know who else on council over the years toured where the old shelter was right off of I-70, but it was criminal. I mean, it was really a bad facility. And of course, what we've got now is state-of-the-art. And I'm glad to see that the philanthropic community is really stepping up to help carry the burden. So that it doesn't just fall upon the taxpayers. Yes?
If I could also add, pardon the interruption. The presentation this evening is, we will be bringing back to the intergovernmental agreement with potential changes. The last one was prepared and signed in 2012. And with the work that's being done by the staff at Foothills Animal Shelter, I really have to give applause to Connie and her team for looking at policies, processes, and procedures, the development of the fundraising team, and then our work with other agencies. But we are in need of some changes to that agreement. So that will be coming back. It will probably be second quarter or third quarter of 2020.
Very good. Okay, thank you all very much. Next, next on our agenda is a public comment on issues not scheduled on the agenda. I have four individuals who have signed up. I'll call on Landon Hood first.
Hello. My name is Landon Hood, and I'm currently in the eighth grade, an eighth grade student at the Shrine of St. Anne's Catholic School in Old Town, Arvada. I'm also the Student Council Vice President. And I would like to take a few minutes of your time to inform you about some of the faith and action projects that Shrine of St. Anne has participated in recently. As a Catholic school, we have always tried our best to help others. And one of the ways our school has been fortunate enough to participate in helping others is our annual Thanksgiving food drive. For two years, I have personally been given the chance, along with fellow student council members, to go deliver the food at our sister school, Annunciation. I have been first, I've seen firsthand how basic store-bought necessities can change somebody's entire holiday experience. This school year, on Veterans Day, my eighth grade class organized a patriotic out-of-uniform day. We had students pay a dollar or more to wear red, white, and blue. They could also bring money to purchase treats at a bake sale. Earlier today, we had another bake sale. And on Wednesday, we will be having an athletic wear out-of-uniform day, where students can pay a dollar or more to wear sports attire. We also be hosting a basketball tournament for our awesome students who donated. Without counting today or Wednesday, we have already raised $626 for the Wounded Warrior Project. At Shrine of St. Anne, we like to support our heroes. Whether that means U.S. military, retired, or active-duty soldiers, we also appreciate our local Arvada police. We showed our appreciation for them last year when our school participated in the S.H.I.E.L.D. 616 program. We were able to provide two sets of heavy Kevlar armored vests to the Arvada Police Officer Brad Gagon and for Officer Mike Bruno, who is former St. Anne alumni. Personally, I know this project meant a lot to a lot of people in our school. Since my father is a firefighter, I understand what his life is like for family members of first responders. That is why this project was so special for me. We help provide gear that can save lives. This is only a few of the Shrine of St. Anne school projects to help others. And we do not intend to stop in the future. Thank you for your time. And thank you for letting me tell you a little bit about how our school loves to help in the community, and especially here in Arvada.
Thank you very much. Next, I have, I believe it's Angie Holcomb.
I would like to address a concern I have about recreational vehicles and motorhomes, trailers, everything parked on the driveway, but it's on their property. It's not on city property. But in most cases, if you don't have an HOA, this is what they do. If they have an HOA, they have to park it in their backyard behind a fence. And the other day, as I was walking down the street, I noticed there was one house with a boat, a motorhome, a trailer, and a truck parked in the driveway. Do we really want to have Arvada look like that? And I would like something to be done about it. I agree they should have all these toys. But if they, if they're going to have them, put them in their backyard.
Okay, thank you. What we'll do, we don't resolve issues during public comment, but I've got your information. It'll be passed on to our team. And someone will get back to you with sort of what the, what the law is and what we can and can't do.
Okay. They have advised me that, that they can park on their property.
And I think that's probably true. Now, it's, you know, and that's why some people live in HOAs, so that they have greater control over what happens there. So.
But is that fair to the rest of us that don't live in an OTOA, the older neighborhoods?
Well, there's, again, I can't really get into a debate with you tonight, but I will tell you that someone will get back to you, okay?
Thank you very much for your time.
Uh-huh. Okay, the other two people that I have signed up are both regarding a matter that's going to be later on in our agenda. We won't be taking public comment at that time, so I will take public comment at this time. I want to be very clear that the agenda item that we do have on this item is a, a motion under Section 8(c) of our agenda tonight that is a motion to have a rehearing. That rehearing, if it is approved, is not going to happen tonight. There will be another night scheduled for the actual rehearing if there are four votes that indicate that they want to have a rehearing. So with that, I'll call upon Stephen Byers.
Before we start, I just, is it okay to comment on that? I mean, or is, if you're not having comment?
I'm going to limit comments tonight to whether or not we should have a rehearing. Not on this, not on the subject matter. That would be for the actual hearing.
Okay. Then I don't think my comments are appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Next, I have Jennifer Enoch.
Jennifer Enoch, 6789 Estes Street. I am opposed to even considering a rehearing. The people of Arvada have spoken over and over again. We've had three hearings so far that have been packed because people don't want this to happen. And I really, I know it will be packed again if it, if there is a rehearing. I think it would just be better to take what you have agreed on already and stick with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other individual that would like to address council simply on the issue of whether or not we should grant the rehearing? Yes, if you come down.
Thank you, Mayor. I actually wanted to talk about something else, but I came in late. But I don't think you should have the rehearing.
Okay.
May I?
Yes.
Okay. Counsel, this Saturday is Chocolate Affair. We all know what Chocolate Affair is, right?
I'll be there.
Dot pours wine. Are you pouring wine? Right, right on. Okay, so for the past nine years, I've overseen this event as part of a HODA event thing. We've raised gobs and gobs of money for, I think it was the Food Bank when we first came on, and then it turned over to Ralston House. And this past year, we raised over $8,200. I wrote a check for over $8,200 to Ralston House. That was by $2,000, a record breaker. This year, who knows? Jennifer and I are going for 10. We are transitioning this event to Ralston House. Ralston House put in the event permit for it. I wanted this to be a permanent fundraiser for them. God only knows, I've been lobbied through the years to raise money for different groups. And hey, why not for us? But I feel like Ralston House is the appropriate thing. They've got the staff. They've got the enthusiasm. And we're missing one thing. We need two council people to judge the baking contest. I'm looking on this side. Because I think probably most of you have been involved, but I don't think Mr. Jones, Ms. Simpson, or Mrs. Miller, are you mrs. or ms. I'm not sure.
Does that have anything to do with my size? Because I like treats?
Have been involved. Your simple task is to eat a bunch of brownies and cookies and cupcakes.
I don't think you have to twist their arms anymore. You've got them. So.
Okay.
They're signed up.
Um, who did I get?
You've got Ms. Miller.
It's this Saturday. No?
What time is it again?
Ms. Simpson.
Okay, Ms. Simpson.
Tell me the time again.
The Chocolate Affair runs from 11 to 2. The baking contest, I think the, you start snacking at about noon.
Okay. Yeah, I'll, I'll bring.
Does that work? I'll have Jennifer Kemp follow up with the two of you?
Yep.
Because I did the pie-eating contest last.
Yeah, I was going to say, are you going to have milk? Because you made a straight milk last time.
I think you made the milk ruling years and years ago. Yeah, we'll, we'll have milk. Longmont Dairy will be there as always.
Because I think Devon was with us, and that milk really adds to the.
Well, we're adding more judges because last year, our judges actually OD'd on sugar. We don't want that.
No.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to put in a request for 2%, please.
Okay.
2% it is.
Okay. Anyone else wish to address council? Sir in the back?
I appreciate the opportunity to address you this evening. And I would really appreciate it if you would consider rehearing the situations coming up regarding the demolition and rebuilding on the two properties.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Yes?
Hi, my name is Steve Howard. So I believe I've sent all you council members a copy of my thoughts about this project. And I oppose the rehearing. I think some of the reasons are laid out in the letter, which is basically, I think it's apparent to everybody at this point that this decision-making process is flawed, is badly flawed. Good decision-making processes yield wise decisions. Flawed decision-making processes don't always do that. I have concerns about the scale of the project. I have concerns about the lack of city-sponsored public hearings. I'm not saying that, that I'm opposed to the rebuilding or redevelopment of that site. But I think other options should be considered, including the potential to integrate one or more of those houses into a redevelopment.
Okay, but I'm not going to get into that tonight. Just the issue being that you think that we should deny the request for rehearing. Just the issue being that you think that we should deny the request for rehearing, or the possibility of a motion for rehearing.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
We've already been through it. Thanks.
Okay, thanks. Anyone else? Yes?
Hi, y'all. I just wanted to say thank you very much for the possibility of rehearing this project. The first hearing really didn't go that well, and it was really hard to follow. So I think it's imperative that we do it again and get it right this time.
Right.
Thank you.
For the record, Cindy Kreitzer. Yes?
Hi, my name is Nina Sloan. I live at 8100 Grandview Avenue, and I appreciate the opportunity for you to consider a rehearing. I appreciate that very much.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Foster?
David Foster. Appreciate this opportunity to at least speak to this issue. I'm surprised that we're here, frankly. I hope that you've all received my-
We have.
-memo from last week. A couple of things. The first is, is that we had mentioned on a couple of occasions, both at Planning Commission and at City Council, that we thought that the process should have included the developer. And we made that very clear at both of those hearings. We sent you documents going through your own code. It was the city's own opinion and city attorney's own opinion that that wasn't the way in which the process should work. But the developer had every opportunity to be here, to comment, to support the application. You sat as a de novo board, and this was your record. It was everything that was submitted. So having a rehearing isn't going to allow for new evidence, new materials to be submitted. It's, you're limited to the very same record that you've already heard once. It just wasn't presented necessarily by the developer, but the developer was here, certainly with an opportunity to speak. So I don't know what you're trying to glean from having a new hearing, other than having somebody new present the very same material that has been presented now three times. I get that the developer is unhappy that they lost at the hearing. But just a month earlier, under the very same process, they won 7-0. 7-0, under the same process, the same presentation, the same style, which we still complained about, they won 7-0. So of course, it does feel a lot like they didn't get the answer that they wanted, and now they're hoping that they have a rehearing. In the interim, 28 days has lapsed. They missed their opportunity to file suit to at least have an opportunity to challenge some of the issues that Mr. Semler, I just got an email late this afternoon, and he claimed that the developer didn't have an opportunity to be represented through the process. Well, if that's the case, they should have filed suit against the city complaining about that process. We've already filed suit, you know that, at the Board of Adjustment. They had the same exact right to do so and at least have then an opportunity to potentially seek rehearing. I also received the memo highlighting the section of the code and an order out of the District Court. I believe that there are two words being conflated, and I know I have to be quick about this. Reapplication and rehearing. I think those are two different things. And in the case in front of the District Court, the court held that there could be a rehearing, even though it says reapplication. But in that particular instance, you as a city council were reviewing a PDP, a rezoning document, and not an appeal of a certificate of compliance. It's a different venue, so-
Thank you, Mr. Foster.
Thank you for your time.
Anyone else? Yes?
Hi. I'm Keene Palmer, and I represent the development group for this project. So all we want is a fair opportunity to tell our story, to tell how we got involved with the project, and more importantly, is have a discussion about the Old Town Design Guidelines and how our project does or doesn't fit with those, and if waivers are justified. We feel that we didn't have that opportunity a month ago, and so that's what we're asking for, to come back before you. I'll give an introduction. I'm not an architect. My architect can tell you chapter and verse about how our project does comply with the 73 or 75 Old Town Design Guidelines. There were seven where waivers were issued, and we feel they're justified. Staff felt they're justified. If you don't feel they're justified, or if there's some additional ones that were not pointed out, tell us, please, and give us the opportunity to go back and refine the plan and bring it back before you. That's all we're looking for. Okay?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else wish to address counsel? Yes?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I'd like to thank you for your thoughtful consideration of the, all of the, everything that was presented on December 16th. I've spent, it'll be a full year next month, engaging an attorney to get on my quest for fairness, for not only myself, but for about 2,000 people who are expecting me to have a voice for them, to help to save the face of Old Town. I want to say I am adamantly against rehearing. I have been through this. I've been to the Board of Adjustments, which didn't go so well for us. And then we went to design, the Design Review Committee, but actually, I didn't go. I was diverted from that, as you know, and there was very little opposition because I was told that wasn't going to happen and I would receive notice. So there, again, that didn't go so well. And now, my quest all along was to come before City Council, because I counted on the good people of Arvada, you included. I consider myself to be a part of the city. That's why I have declined from talking to the media about this, because I have no intentions of having my city, the city of Arvada, dragged through the mud and them looking at this as if there's some kind of corruption and all this kind of stuff that the media likes to do. But things did go for us well on the 16th, and I'm proud to say that I was very proud of our city for that. And I think that that decision should hold, just because it did not go well for Mr. Palmer. This time, I don't believe that it should be reheard. It just seems ludicrous and unfair to me, and I don't feel like that's something that cities should be doing. I see why our city has been divided so much, because people have a distrust. And I always try to dispel those rumors amongst people who like to think that there's some kind of corruption or something going on. A rehearing, I think, will just kind of peel the scab right off of that wound. And I want to see this whole thing just resolve and be done with. So I would just please ask you to do not, do not allow this to go through, so that somebody that doesn't get their way gets a rehearing. I have had to go through the process, and it's been said that the developer has done everything right, as I've listened to city staff defend him, as I'm paying my fancy man here to come in. And this has come at a great cost to me and my family, and it will continue to come at a great cost until it comes to an end. But I will not stop, because I have had the faith put into me by over 2,000 people who have signed petitions, who have sent letters, who have stopped to see me, who have voiced their opinion, that they really want to see justice served here. All I've done is been on a quest for fairness, and I believe I received that on December 16th. Please let that hold. Thank you.
Thank you. For the record, Lori Brink. Anyone else? Yes?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Robert Thomas, 5851 Balsam Place. I would ask that you all consider rehearing this case. I believe the previous process was not inclusive of hearing Brick Investments or Mr. Palmer's case. I believe his intentions in the Brick Investments are benign and are looking out for the future of what Old Town can be. I just ask that you give him a fair shake and give him the fair say in the matters at hand. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I'll close the public comment portion, move on to our consent agenda. We have had a request remove one item from the consent agenda, and that would be item 8a6, which is R20018, a resolution authorizing an agreement by and between the city of Arvada and Ameresco Inc. for an energy performance contracting program for city facilities in a maximum contract price not to exceed $4,550,563. My policy is, is if I have a council member ask that something be removed from the consent agenda, that I will remove it and that we'll consider it separately. So at this time, we will be considering the consent items. R20013, a resolution authorizing the issuance of a purchase order in the amount of $267,396 with LL Johnson Distributing Company for the purchase of turf maintenance equipment. Second item is a resolution authorizing the issuance of a purchase order in the amount of $400,000 to Central Salt for salt material for the 2020 snow season. Hopefully, if January is any indication, we may not need this, and we'll be able to carry it over. Next is a resolution authorizing the issuance of a purchase order and $400,000 to Saltworks Salt Company for the purchase of salt material for 2020. Next is a resolution authorizing the issuance of a purchase order in the amount of $400,000 to GMCO Corporation for the purchase of liquid de-icer material for the 2020 snow season. And the final consent item is a resolution authorizing the city of Arvada to purchase chemicals for water treatment plant operations in an amount not to exceed approximately $868,000. Mr. Marriott?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that resolutions R20-013 through R20-017 all be approved.
Motion's for approval. All votes cast. That passes 7 to 0. Next, we'll take a vote on Resolution 20018, a resolution authorizing an agreement between the city of Arvada and Ameresco Inc. for the energy performance contracting program for city facilities in a maximum contract price not to exceed $4,550,563. I'll begin by indicating that I did receive during this last election cycle a contribution from a member of this entity, but that will not influence how I'm going to vote on this matter tonight. Mr. Devin?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, would you like an overview of this program?
Brief overview. You gave us some information previously. If you'll give us a very brief overview, I believe that there may be representatives of that company here tonight, and I believe that a council member may have some questions.
Correct. We could call a member of our team up to provide you with that brief overview. Ask Facilities Manager Kim Vega to provide you with an overview of the contract. We also understand there may be some questions regarding the financial performance elements of the contract, and we have Director of Finance Brian Archer standing by to also provide that information.
Good evening. About two years ago, we started a program with the Colorado Energy Office for energy performance contracting. We did a lot of work in that two-year period to validate not only selecting a EPC, energy performance contractor, but to also evaluate the initial grade audit, which we went through each of our facilities, 12 of them, and we evaluated the energy performance, and that took about a year period of time. Ameresco was the selected energy provider in this case, and we went through and looked at all the different facilities. Our goal was to have a minimum 12-year or maximum 12-year ROI with a 20%, plus savings, energy savings overall. So Ameresco, in the last 12 months, went through, and they've come up with a program and uncovered about $241,000 a year in savings, with a simple payback, if it's self-financed, of 10 years. And we met the goal of 20% by hitting a goal of 24%. The main facility that will be getting a big upgrade will be the Arvada Center. So the Arvada Center has, it's a 29-year-old facility, and we're at end-of-life with all of the rooftop units. We have six of them up there, and this program will replace all six units, and that alone is a huge cost that's part of the program. So if you replace one unit at the Arvada Center, because of the crane and the reach, we've got to go to the middle of the building, you're better off replacing all the units. So this program will do that, and it'll also replace one of the boilers that we have that's up on the roof. So it's a major program to get those all done at one time. Sorry if I wasn't on the mic. Oh, you're good. Sorry. The other part of this program is to put in solar panels. So we're looking to add solar panels at five of our facilities totaling 225 kilowatts of solar power. We were selected by the Solar Rewards Program earlier in September of 2019 by Xcel Energy, and this will give us the standard tariff for solar use. So the new program that they have is that you get savings off of solar power that you generate, but you also get savings off of the power that you're using for the building that's not solar. So it's a good program, and that program is going to yield about $361,000 over the program. Wasn't prepared for this, so.
That's okay.
Stay with me. So the program is, it's a 24-year program. We're going to generate, after we pay off the loan, we'll generate about $3.4 million for the remainder of 14 years, and we'll still have useful life for that equipment. So.
I assume staff recommendation is that we approve this resolution?
Yes, it is. You know, this is a guaranteed savings program to the state of Colorado, so if they don't hit the savings in a year, they have to pay for it. So it's a guaranteed savings. It's not a program that you're not at risk with the guaranteed savings, as long as you've got the guaranteed savings.
Okay, council questions?
Mr. Mayor, I thought it might be appropriate for Director of Finance to give a quick summary of the financial impacts and savings.
Mayor, I would like to offer an opportunity. So overall, it's about a $4.5 million program. $3 million will come from our general fund, about $1.5 million will come from our buildings fund. The payback, as Mr. Vega made reference to, is about a 10-year payback for the general fund, and then the last, the next three years will pay back the building fund, and that will leave us 11 years where we will reap the benefits each and every year, with an overall estimated savings of about, between $3.4 and $4.4 million after year 13. So from year 13 through year 24, or the end of the life of this equipment, we will be basically getting the savings each and every year. And the savings goes across all different utilities, so electric, natural gas, water, sewer, Xcel reduced cost, and then, as Kim made reference to, the photobotaic or solar.
Okay. Mr. Pfeifer?
So you made reference of a group called "they." So it says, who is "they" that guarantees the $300,000?
Ameresco.
So they take on-
Yeah, that's the energy performance contractor.
So they take on the fiscal risk?
Yes, they are.
So they guarantee that, and anything north of that, we reap the benefit as well?
We do.
If it's lower than that, I just want to be crystal clear, it's lower than that?
They pay the difference.
They pay it?
Yes, sir.
That's in our agreement with the state?
That's correct.
Okay.
And Ameresco. Ameresco's in that agreement.
So I appreciate the years, whatever, to 24, but did you calculate what our costs are to maintain those assets?
That's included in that calculation.
It is in that savings?
Absolutely.
So you did include maintenance costs?
Yeah, we have a lower maintenance cost, obviously, because they're newer, but it's calculated in as part of what Ameresco did.
It should grow over time, so I'm assuming you-
That is correct.
Okay, thank you, Brian.
We also include a cost for maintaining the solar system.
Okay, and the array or whatever?
That's correct.
Okay, that's all I had. Thank you.
Mr. Marriott?
I just have a couple of quick questions. Kim, one for you. I know part of this program is to replace a couple of inverters, I think, on this building that are no longer functioning, with ones that were, that this should last the length of this program at least, which is 24 years. So the inverters that are no longer functioning, do you know how old they are?
I think it was 2013, so about six or seven years old.
Six or seven years?
Yeah.
So why do we think that this next group of inverters is going to last, if the last one's lasted six years, they're going to last 24 years? Or is part of this plan to replace them every six years or eight years, or, you know, what's the difference there?
I know they're better, but Paul, you want to help me on that one? I'll let the expert come up here on that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor and City Council, thank you very much. Yeah, so inverters actually have a useful life around 10 to 12 years, actually. Yeah, so inverters actually have a useful life around 10 to 12 years, actually. So the inverters going out at six years was a little bit premature, but in that ongoing O&M cost for the solar, we have actually allocated roughly $178,000 for O&M improvement. So in the instance, we, we know that the inverters are going to go back out, but we've allocated the money to replace those moving, moving forward.
So one time in the, in the 24 years?
We, solar assets are typically about a 35-year asset, actually. Solar panels themselves actually carry a 25-year warranty. The inverters are actually the weak point in those systems.
Right. I just wonder, the plan is, the ones that we have lasted six years, we've built in some costs, it sounds like to replace them one time in 24 years, so we're betting on getting 12 years and then 12 more years. Is that, am I clear? Is that what we're doing?
We have just allocated the $178,000. What it is to be used for is just, is just to be determined. It's kind of more or less a slush fund.
Okay.
So--
But we've essentially planned for it.
An inverter costs around $3,500, for example, so you're, you can replace them many times over.
Got it. Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. And then my second question is for Finance Director. Mr. Archer, the only question I would ask you, if we're going to be contributing $3 million out of our general fund, is this going to come at the expense of anything else, or where is, where is the money coming from? Are we putting something off? Are we spending out of our reserves? Where, where does the money come from?
Councilmember Marriott, thank you for the question. We're not putting anything off. We are reducing our reserves, but this fits inside of our 10-year model. So what you will see is a reduction in the current year of $3 million, and that being paid back over the 10 years. And so at the end of the 10 years, we'll be at the same point as we are today.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Ms. Ford?
And Mr. Archer, that $3 million, that includes interest? The cost includes the interest for the, over that period of time? Are we taking out a loan for any of this?
We are not taking out a loan, Councilmember Ford, so there's no interest cost.
That's right, because you said it was a general fund.
Yes.
And the other, okay, yeah.
Yes, we're not going to charge the building fund interest as of today.
I'm, I'm asking some questions that a constituent had asked me, and there was confusion, which is why I wanted to make sure that we really--
Absolutely. Councilmember Ford, originally, when this was proposed, we did talk about borrowing the funds, but we felt like since the payback period fell inside of the 10-year model, that it was easier for us to just cash finance.
And then I would like to ask the question that my constituent asked me. If you could tell me why this is the best approach, given the fact that technology is continually changing, and so there may be some hot product on the market come out that really saves costs, energy costs?
From my perspective, the biggest plus here is replacing units that have reached their end of useful life, and not having the funds to replace those units currently is, is a big benefit. Technology, I mean, it's pretty up there right now, high efficient buildings, lead requirements that are out there. Equipment is much better than it was five years ago, but it's hard to foresee the future unless my expert here, Paul, can, can help us out. But analytics is probably coming into it, but that's something that you add on later on to the equipment, and it can go on to any type of equipment, that we can do trend analysis and make that equipment perform even better with real-time commissioning. That's the thing that we're waiting on. It's not there yet, but it's not going to be an expensive item when it does come out.
Want to add something?
Sure. I would just say that expert better be, being used in a very loose term. But I would say that if not now's the right time, then when? Technology is going to constantly evolve, and so what you install now, there's likely going to be a better widget in five, 10 years, so, so on. But as, as Kim had mentioned, you know, the items at the Arvada Center, being 29 years old, most of that rooftop equipment has a rated life of around 15, between 15 and 20 years. So the fact that the maintenance team has been able to keep up so well with that equipment speaks very well of, of them, and the fact that the average weighted useful life of everything that's going to be going into your facilities is roughly 24 years. And so you will have roughly 14 years of useful life beyond your payback. And so it, it's a project that achieves the triple bottom line in our, in our book.
Can I also add that the operating and maintenance costs for these pieces of equipment are starting to go up significantly? And so this time period, it made sense, given the items that they just made reference to, to really try to take advantage of it.
Well, I just want to thank, thank you, Mayor, for giving this opportunity--
You bet.
--for further explanation.
Very good. No other questions? I'm prepared for a motion. Mr. Marriott?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that Resolution R 20-2018, a resolution authorizing an agreement by and between the city of Arvada and Ameresco Inc. for energy performance contracting program for city facilities in a maximum contract price not to exceed approximately $4.5 million be approved.
Motion for approval. All votes cast. That passes seven to zero. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Okay, next we have a Resolution R 20019, a resolution authorizing acceptance of a Metropolitan DUI Task Force IGA. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is a, before you is, is a resolution to authorize the Arvada Police Department to participate with other Denver-area law enforcement agencies in a Metropolitan DUI Task Force to facilitate coordinated enforcement actions and DUI checkpoints and saturation patrols. The Arvada Police Department has participated in activities like this in the past, and this would formalize the DUI enforcement going forward. This IGA requires no additional financial commitments. We'll be able to work within the current level of financial resources, and by participating in this, in this program, we will be able to access specialized enforcement equipment that would not be otherwise available to us, but that is available to other agencies. This merely provides an operational framework for us going forward to enhance DUI enforcement, and we are very enthusiastically recommending the approval of the resolution.
Very good. Any council questions or action? Ms. Simpson?
I'd like to make a motion if there are no questions.
There are no questions. You may proceed.
I move that R 20-019, a resolution authorizing acceptance of a Metropolitan DUI Task Force IGA be approved.
Motion for approval. All votes cast. That passes seven to zero. Certainly, I love seeing things like this, where we're cooperating with our fellow communities in an issue that's very important, and certainly we get good results from this, and so I appreciate the work that the police department and everybody else in our team put together into this. So thank you. Okay. Next item on the agenda is a request that was made to have on the agenda tonight, a motion pursuant to Section 3.1.17 of the Land Development Code to rehear. Ms. Ford?
Mayor, excuse me, I ask for, for your permission to be recused from this decision for the same reason I asked in December.
Very good. So I would entertain a motion to permit Ms. Ford to be recused from this matter. Mr. Marriott?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that Ms. Ford be recused from this matter before us.
Yeah, and for those who, thank you, Mayor Protim Miller, for, the reason is that Ms. Ford executed a petition pertaining to this issue, not knowing that it would ever come before City Council, but the fact that it did caused her to seek to be recused, and that is why she did not participate in the last hearing, why she's not participating in this vote, and why she will not participate in any future proceedings pertaining to this matter. That passes six to zero. Ms. Ford, you don't need to leave the dais for this. Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yeah, I'd like to make the motion. I move that pursuant to Section 3.1.17 of the Land Development Code, the one-year waiting period for hearing the same or substantially same application be waived, and that a hearing of the appeal of and, and application for a certificate of compliance concerning the development of properties located at 7315 and 7317 Grandview Avenue and 7318 West 57th Avenue be scheduled for a future date and properly noticed. And I'll speak to that motion in--
Please.
The reason I'm asking for this motion, and given the time and getting everyone out here, is because I, I believe that on the last hearing, there's information that I was privy to that I think would benefit the overall conversation, and that was hearing from the developer themselves. That's why I'm asking the council to consider this motion. I believe there's information that we did not get to hear last time, and so therefore, I'd look forward to your support.
Okay, let me, let me speak to the motion. As one of the individuals who voted against the original applicant in this matter, that we had never had this kind of hearing before in my 20 years at City Council of a appeal of a planning director's decision. I think there was a learning curve and some experience that we had with that process that makes me call into question the fundamental fairness of that hearing based upon advice that was given to the applicant in terms of how to proceed with the hearing. I think the clear intent of our team was that to follow the same procedure that had happened at Planning Commission, whether or not, you know, I should have taken it upon myself or someone else should have indicated at that time, we really need to hear from the applicant. I have some unanswered questions in terms of, of the economic hardship, which is a basis for waivers. It's no secret that I think that the massing of this is very concerning, and I will be supporting a rehearing, but that certainly is not any indication of how I intend to vote following that rehearing as to the, as to the full matter. But I need to hear some, I want to make sure that our process was truly fair to all parties. I do anticipate that we'll be hearing from many, many people again on this, and that we're subjecting ourselves to another full hearing on this matter, but I think it is appropriate to conduct that additional hearing. I think that the applicant will then have a chance to stand up before us and, and either convince us that those waivers should or should not be granted, and the opponents will also have every opportunity to express their rationales and reasons again for why they are opposed to the project. So I think this is a situation where in fundamental fairness, we should indeed have that rehearing. So I will support Mr. Pfeiffer's motion, again, without indicating that it's going to, whether or not it's going to sway any of our decisions as to this, and it may end up in a 3-3 tie-in, or may, who knows how it's going to turn out. But we will, based upon a six-to-zero vote, have that rehearing. What's going to be the process to schedule that?
Your Honor, we would plan to reach out to the applicant and to the appellant both to find a time that would work for them in terms of the next hearing date, and that's how we would go about scheduling it. It does have to be far enough out that we can properly notice it, so we do want to be mindful of that, but otherwise, we do want to find a date that works for everyone.
Very good. Okay, we have no public hearings for tonight. Public comment? Any individual like to address City Council at this time? Seeing none, I'll close that public comment portion, open it up for City Council reports. I don't see a request for any City Council reports. I do urge people to come out to the Chocolate Affair on Saturday, and we'll give Lauren and David relief in terms of Pepto-Bismol or whatever you might need after your, your good work on that. Mr. Devon, Ethan, you've got?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just a reminder, our February 10 workshop will give you an update on tobacco vaping alternatives and also Kandell's Land Use Plan.
Very good. Ms. Morris, anything from the City Attorney's Office?
Nothing from me, Your Honor.
Very good. Then we stand in adjournment.